Great. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is councillor Jenna Stoner. I'm acting mayor for the month of March. I will be chairing the committee of the whole for today, Tuesday, March 1st. We are fortunate to be meeting today on the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. May I please have a motion to adopt the agenda? By councillor Race, second by councillor Hereford. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two items today on our, sorry, three items today on our agenda. We will be starting with real estate facilities, master plan and general works update with Mr. Bragg. I'll pass it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Stoner. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Thank you for your time this afternoon. This is a memo to council. There's no decisions or there's no request for decisions to be made unless council and mayor wishes to do so. So this is the Q1 2022 Facilities and Construction Update. The objective is to provide an update on the real estate facilities, master plan projects and other works for this quarter of 2022. This includes Valley Cliff Fire Hall, Tannalas Fire Hall, Public Works Facility, municipal offices, Brennan Park Recreation Centre, sorry, Municipal Office and Brennan Park Recreation Centre, Covered Structures, Sustainability and an update on the, on grants as well. Before diving in to the projects, I just wanted to update the budget and costing process. And just to produce some clarity on how we move through, it's a standardized process. It's split into two areas and it goes from a Class D to Class C to Class B to Class A. And at a Class A, it's where construction is about to start. And we have signed contracts. And at that particular point, we're very confident of the number that's been produced by the project team. It would move forward on that. And that's what we've done with Valley Cliff Fire Hall, for example. On the other side, you've got broad cost projections. And what that is, is a, an estimate from third-party quantity surveyors, builders and also architects. And everyone combines to give their best numbers at that particular time of the project. So a Class D is a generic, it's a square foot. An example of that one is the temporary fire hall that we've got at the moment. We're not sure exactly the location, but we know a rough cost of that based on where we've been previously and picking out any industry square foot. We then move through to a Class C and a Class B. And then what that is, we have more details from design, scope and specifications of the project. The Public Works project and Tannalas Fire Hall are between Class D and Class C. And the Public Works is just a little bit ahead of Tannalas at the moment. Just a, an overview of how we contract the participants as well, because it just gives a bit of an understanding of how we work through the budgets. So Public Works is a standard construction management process. And typically it's a linear process where we go and hire an architect, we hire the consultants, then we hire the builder. And we move through this process from Class D to Class B. Typically in that situation, you do get the odd upset with the numbers as more participants come on board. For the Tannalas Fire Hall, what we've done is an IPD, which is an integrated project delivery agreement with all the project participants. It's slightly different where we combine everyone and we get them upfront and we put them under one, with them. We work with them under one contract. And what that does is it gets us to a Class B a lot sooner in the process. So Valley Cliff Fire Hall, which is under construction at the moment, was budgeted at $16.7 million. We're currently operating within about 1% of that and we're projected to finish within 1%. We're not going to exceed the 1% as we come into May here. We're on time. The project team are doing a pretty good job, or a very good job actually, working through COVID. And the difficulties of getting pricing and material items and delayed, delayed materials and labour issues as well from costing. They've done a very, really, really good job working through here and actually keeping on time, on budget. So the works at the moment, they've just finished weatherproofing. Exterior insulation is going on, the siding is actually going on next week. So we're going to start to see some colour and form to the exterior of the building. The interiors, the drywall is done downstairs and the painting is going on, which is great. We can actually see some form inside now. The hurdles, we have had a dropped HVAC unit and that's caused a bit of issues because it's a lead item. We've worked through that, which is great. And typical material delays as we come out of COVID here. The next quarter, staff are focused internally on gearing up for a handover. The fittings, furniture and equipment deliverables are in place and we're also working out maintenance systems and getting staff up to date and how we run this new building that's coming on board. The Tannalas Fire Hall, there's a couple of, oh, sorry, there's an isometric drawing here. It's on the top right. And what that shows, it's a view looking towards the northwest from Tannalas Road. It shows that the, the design incorporates upper level construction. And this could be apartments, it could be affordable housing. It could be a commercial site, it could be performing arts. We're just designing the building to allow for a structure in the, in the open space there. This one's an 8,100 square foot building. It has three apparatus bays and a spine as well, which we're working through the finals on the design here. It is a post-disaster building, being a fire hall. And we've increased the height of the building to have it operational above the flood control. And you can see the angle of the driveway there. What that's done is it's pushed the whole building back towards the hydro power lines there. And we're making sure that the fire department have a nice large apron to work with and one that's not steep, roughly about 7%. So it's not ideal, but unfortunately flood control, you'd need to push the building up, take it above that. Sorry, post-disaster, yeah, so post-disaster level. What that is, is you have certain levels for a standard building. Post-disaster brings it up to another level where you have thicker beams, thicker columns, thicker footings. And it can handle a larger level of earthquake or a larger level of flooding as the debris comes through. So you're basically creating a stronger building and a little bit more expensive than your standard construction. So the broad cost projection for Tannalas Fire Hall is $10 million. The Class D indicative is coming in at 12.3, so it's higher than where we want to be at the moment. As noted, this is an IPD project, so this one, the team are working through to reduce that. On the time, on the timeline, we're looking into Q3, possibly early Q4 start, but we'll have shovels in the ground this year. Under works, we're going through the validation phase and validation phase gets us to a point where we're confident of getting to that Class B. And that's over the next couple of months, we'll have that. There's a focus on the budget. We're also engaging the participants, we're finalizing the contract with them all. We're working on the cost of the sustainability levels and also finalizing some schematic drawings. The issues we've had, it's, well hurdles, is soil contamination. We're working through remediation on that particular site. The upper level allowance and designing around the, the upper levels there, which were almost complete. And then just the IPD, which is integrated project delivery, it is a little bit slow to get going compared to construction management. But at one point, we'll surpass Public Works as far as the documentation goes. Next quarter, again, focus and budget, finalizing soil contamination, getting the contract signed with participants, updating schematic design and also coming back to council for a cost and scope decision. And applying for grants, which I'll go through in detail on the final slide here. And the temporary fire hall, we're looking at alternative location at the moment, just to make sure that we can get the building up in time. I'll update a little bit further down the track, but the building, the building is actually complete, the drawings are complete. The hurdles that we're looking at at the moment is location and also utility timing. And the focus is to resolve this location. With Public Works, this is a elevation section and it's the best way to show an overview of the building. It's a 30,000 square foot building. We've got three bays on one side, which is the maintenance side and two and a half bays as well. Sorry, the three bays are maintenance bays and we've got two and a half bays of shops. We've got a fourth one on the outside there as well, that is an open bay. And that's in our back pocket to pull out for costs as we move through here. We've done that one, so it allows productivity for staff to work outside. The building's split into two. We've got offices and maintenance bays. And we've done that for a couple of reasons. One, trying to produce maintenance bays, we've focused on carbon reduction here and doing them in glue lams or a wood structure is our first priority, but on the cost side and size side, prefabricated steel is a much more feasible option here. From then, because we're not getting the carbon numbers on the maintenance side, we focused the carbon numbers onto the office side. And we're proposing that one makes made out of glue lams and CLTs, which is a cross laminated timber, they're large beams and large panels of lumber. So we can reduce the carbon that way. On the sustainability side, the office is the focus. The difficulty is in reaching sustainability numbers on a open bay, public works, maintenance garage, for want of a better word, is when the doors open and close all the time, it's very difficult to create the airspace needed to keep the energy numbers down. So we focused all the, the numbers and the sustainability levels onto the office side. As far as the size of the building is concerned, we're a little bit above the real estate facilities master plan. It was noted at 26,000 square feet. We're at 30,000 square feet. We've dove in pretty heavily here. We've had a couple of value engineering sessions. And what the value engineering does is reduces the building and looks at areas where we can apply cost savings to the building. The architect that we have got on board has got 25 years of experience and this is their 33rd Public Works building. They know what industry standard is. We've done a comparable with BC, other BC Public Works projects. And just to give a bit of an indication here, on the low side per person, it's 1.25 square feet. On the high side per person, it's 7.58 square feet and this facility is operating at 1.54. So the size of the building, the project team are pretty confident. They've got the size of the building within where we want it. There's a, there's a bit of a leeway here, because you don't want to create a building that's too small. We need to come back and create more work and follow five years, six years, seven years and come back to council and request more money to do more work here. But also we need it to be very functional and now's the time to get in and create this and do it once and do it properly. This view, you can see, it gives a bit of an indication of what the, the levels are here. So you can see the split from the office to the maintenance bays. The office has been raised. And the focus of that is to create everything above flood control. That's all the mechanical and electrical and everything from the emergency side. The maintenance bays are basically pretty simple maintenance bays. They're clipped, they're kept at just above flood level. And the thought process there from the team is to allow the doors to be open and the flood waters and the debris to move through. And then mitigate that by constructing out of materials that we can quickly clean and get back to business as the flood moves through there. We had some cost hurdles on this one where we raised the whole building. It would have been better to raise the whole site, but then it's cost prohibitive to raise the site. If we raise just the building alone, then the angles don't allow for a public works yard. There'll be literally angles all over the building there. So the, the split here is to do a flood control focus on the creicle areas, which was the office and raising everything there. And then keep everything else at just above flood level there. So the broad cost projection.
Mr. Bragg, can I, is there a clarifying question?
Yep.
Oh, sorry. Just, oh, sorry, wrong person. I was just curious how much it has to come up or how much, I mean, if you were raising the whole site, for example, how much are you coming up to meet the flood level?
It's estimated around 1.5 to 1.7 metres.
Go ahead councillor Hereford, just a clarifying question?
Yeah, I, I was going to ask around this question, this question too. But in relation to the train tracks, sort of like the point of reference behind, is it, is that about, is that roughly the, the level? I'm just having a hard time visualing, visualizing what that, like a reference point there for that, for the level? Or is it maybe more equivalent to where the, that backfill that's been done on the wastewater treatment piece recently?
Yeah. Just trying to figure. Yeah, the overview there would be the same as the preload that we've put on for the wastewater treatment there. And it's, you know, the road level, if, if we'll create an island here and it's kind of, it's a difficult site to work with. And this is literally what the project team has come up with for, for the best overview here for flood control. So the broadcast projection is $21 million. We're running at 23.8 million. And the salt sheds on top of this, we're estimating the salt sheds at 650,000, but that is a very upper indicative cost. And this is early on in the process as well. The timeline, and this is to be discussed and confirmed, we're pushing through to get shovels in the ground in Q4 this year. Under works at the moment is the salt shed works. We're getting design assist on board. And what design assist is, is getting the trades on early. And what this does is, which is to get into Class B as quick as we can. We're working on Class Budget, C plans, sorry, Class C budget plans, working through the contamination studies and also the sustainability costs. The hurdles at the moment are fine tuning the budget, working through soil contamination and also coordinating works with the wastewater treatment plant. Because they have significant, we call it circular works on the north side of their site. And we're trying to work out economies of scale between the two sites at the moment. The next quarter, we're still focused on budget. We'll detail the design a little bit further. Also come back to council after the design's been detailed to a level and we'll go through the scope and cost. And then also salt shed preparations and then the preload scope of work. The municipal office and Brennan Park Recreation Centre, there's a project charter for both projects currently in works. And we'll come back to council in Q2 to update. On Covered Structures, staff came to council in February 22 last week. And we're kickstarting the, this project now, looking at tender to all smaller structures. And we'll be complete by the end of August. The sustainability levels, what's shown here in grey is what's under construction. So we can see actual numbers here. What's proposed is the Tannalas Fire Hall and the Public Works. Valley Cliff is running on, it's ahead of its sustainability numbers, which is great as an overall. You noticed the landfill here, we had a target of saving 75%, we're at 97%, which is great. That'll come down by the end of the job, we're expecting around 85 to 87%. But all in all, we're above it on the tracking side, which is great. For Tannalas Fire Hall and Public Works, the main target here is to get energy levels at 20%, better than step code three. And it's very, very close to passive. And we're working through this with the design teams for the public, sorry, for the Tannalas Fire Hall, we're going for a grant that requires us to get up to that level. And finally here for the final slide on grant funding, the GICB grant, which is the Green and Inclusive Community Buildings Programme. It's the grant that's currently in works for Brennan Park Recreation Centre for $16.3 million. The works on that one was a new administration building, elevator, new elevator, lobby refit, ice rink change rooms, refit, ice rink re-insulation on the roof, mezzanine fit out and also programming and some HVAC works. We're awaiting notification on that one. It was meant to come in fall last year. It's a federal fund. This could happen any day, but there's also a secondary intake on this one. So if we're not successful, we can apply again for a, for a second, a second round here. Just to note on this grant, it's, it's a quick interaction, it's a quick start. Some of the grants actually won't start for a period of time. This one, if it is approved, then it's literally next day we can start to work on it. The other grant that we're looking at at the moment is not in application, but we're focusing on applying for it. It's called the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Grant. It's for Tannalas Fire Hall. This one's a green-based grant. It is a grant and loan where, for example, we are focusing on a $10 million ask. We give back $8.5 million and keep the 1.5, the 8.5 supplied at a very low interest rate. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Councillor Race, kick us off.
Thank you. Just going back to the Brennan Park project. Excuse me. I think it was last term actually, when we completed a plan for Brennan Park. And we had phase one, two, three and four. And phase one was kind of, I think what you just showed up there. Phase two is a programming building. Three was the rank and four was the pool. And this phase one looks like it's expanded a little bit. I didn't recall, apart from the cost escalations, I didn't recall it being quite as expansive. So have we kind of opened that up a little bit compared to where we were perhaps in the middle of last term?
Through the chair, yes. With the grants, we need to fall under their checklist as to what works. And sometimes we need to, I wouldn't say manipulate, but we need to target the works that follows the grant. It gives us the highest chance of getting the grant. In this particular instance, it had a 70% community focus and a 30% sustainability focus. And what we've done is we've taken the stages that were in the RAFMP, or Real Estate Facilities Master Plan, and picked and chosen what suits the grant, but also what suits stage one. It was a bit of a combination of the two. So yeah, it's expanded from what was originally in there, correct.
Councillor Pennington?
Yeah, just, you mentioned the, the step code. Are we, is there an opportunity to think about step code two? I guess what is our energy system in terms of electric versus fossil fuel? And, you know, do we have some, because I think the priority from our perspective anyways is emissions, the immediate priority, not to discount reducing energy consumption. But is there an opportunity by relaxing the step code expectations a little bit, but keeping the emissions low through no fossil?
Through the chair, there is. And there's, when you, when we're doing carbon numbers on a project, it's like you take from one side and you give to the other. And there's a lot of give and, give and take. You know, there's two focuses here. One is when you're looking at a building, the carbon numbers, there's a lot of carbon in the material that's used. It's not just about the post-turn key and the energy use. So we're trying to focus on both of those. You know, for instance, steel is not ideal for a sustainability side for Public Works. But from a feasibility and a numbers side, it's the best that we can use at this stage. So I hope I answered your question there.
Yeah, that helps. Thanks. And to clarify, are we considering a fossil-free building in terms of energy systems going forward?
Through the chair, yes, we're electrifying everything. We've looked at gas, we've looked at renewable natural gas and electrification, electrification by far gives us the best bang for buck.
Okay, thank you. And the other question then is, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what the office space is being used for. And I remember at some of the events pre-COVID, being at the, the waste treatment plant and the public works yard and the various office space in there. But mapping that onto the space on that site, is this the waste treatment offices there as well? Or just can you talk a bit about what departments will be in those offices?
Through the chair, it's mainly for Public Works. Wastewater Treatment Plant still have their offices. But it is opening up because we, you know, the meeting rooms that are there at the moment gets used by both, both sectors there. So we're focused on having meeting rooms and then also staff coming in. I believe the wastewater treatment plant staff will be using it significantly, but they've still got their own side. Yes.
All right, I have councillor Anderson and then councillor French.
Thank you. Mr. Bragg, I, I take it you were suggesting you'll come forward quarter two on the tentless hall, the Tannalas Fire Hall. I have two questions. You're, you are putting forward a potential scenario of several floors rather than just one upper floor. And there may be cost, so how challenging is getting together the information for that quarter two presentation, not only for that issue, but deciding on the functions and space programming for upper floors, if it's housing or something other? There are differences for mechanical systems, other infrastructure. If you're going to be, we are going to be entertaining a dialogue with community groups regarding that community space. Are we pressed for time? Is it important that, how challenging will that be for a quarter two timeline in assembling that information?
Through the chair, we can get an indication of which way we can go. What we're doing now is designing to allow for both of them. So it puts us in a position. When we're doing, you know, multiple floors, you have to, the weight is obviously increased significantly. When we're doing a single floor, you can go to a lightweight structure. So we're allowing for both of those, but we can also dive in further for Q2 and actually get some numbers on each side if we need to.
Thank you.
Councillor French?
Thanks Chair. I'm focusing in on the Tannalas Fire Hall recycling percentage of 75%. And then compare that to Valley Cliff at 97%. Can you talk a little bit about the difference in scenarios that is creating that discrepancy between the two sites?
Through the chair, yes. Valley Cliff existing building was made of steel and steel is really, it's probably one of the best materials to work with as far as recyclability is concerned. The existing Tannalas Fire Hall is made up of concrete block and it's also got an insulation and then it has a chemical. So we've gone a little bit, like the minimum amount that we're targeting is 75%. We've focused with the consultants a little bit higher than that. The difficulty in achieving anything further than that is the split on the actual materials that are doing demolition during construction. It's going to be the same as, as Valley Cliff. Thanks Chair.
Go ahead councillor Race.
Thank you. Back to Brennan Park. In the four phases that I was talking about, I know we, I think even last term, applied for a grant for what I'll call phase two, which was the programming building on the east side and didn't get it. But are we still thinking about the one, two, three, four phases in more or less that order? Have we made sort of any other adjustments or changes? And would we necessarily do all four phases before we took on another project? And I'm thinking possibly of the library, for example, where they somehow get into that mix?
Through the chair, it's a good question. The mix that's there at the moment is per the RAFMP, there's no changes in the, in the stages and what we're looking at. What will change the proposed timeline is that the grants come through. And as we noted before, sometimes we need to change the works to work within the grant boundaries. But at this stage, we're keeping the same stages in the real estate facilities master plan.
I have a few questions, mostly about the public works yard. What is the current square footage that we have for the public works offices?
Through the chair, I'll have to get you that number. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's very small compared to what we're focused on aiming for.
And then in the proposed building, what is, do we have a sense of what the breakdown is of this? So it's in the report, it says it's almost 33,000 square feet for the building size. How does that break down for office versus storage versus the maintenance base?
Through the chair again, I'll have to get you that information.
Okay, that would be helpful. I will just generally make a comment that the size of the building seem, the scope of it seems a little bit surprising to me. I appreciate that we are trying to be forward-thinking in what it is that we need. But I think what we've learned over the last few years is that we actually need less office space, not more. So I was just a little bit shocked at the scale of that building. And I think for me, some stronger rationale as to what that square footage is for and how it's being allocated will be needed. And then my other question was, was there any consideration of, or is it at all possible to kind of smooth that building out? So appreciate trying to like divide it up in terms of a sustainability perspective. But can you put office floors on top of the maintenance base?
Oh, yeah, through the chair, you can put offices on top and we did look at that. The cheapest way to get this built is through a prefab engineered structure for the maintenance base because of the spans that are required. And once you start loading that up, it increases costs significantly because of size of the, the beams. So yeah, it's a good, it's a good option. And we did, you know, review that one and feasibly, it's just not the best option there. To get an indication of where we sit on sides, the architect dove in to compare other BC Public Works yards. And they looked from, you know, North Vancouver to Strathcona and they sort of handpicked out some ones here. And we found that the Squamish one that we've proposed doing, sorry, the proposed works is 31,000 square feet. And again, noting here, it's a 1.5 square foot per person. And it is on the small side. We've really focused on making sure that there's no additional square foot here. And then we're not overbuilding this one. The architect has done a deep dive in with all staff as well to figure out and resolve what's required here from a functional level. The difference between this amount of work and what was in the real estate facilities master plan is that the level of dive in that the architect does and is required to do is it's an overview for the real estate facilities master plan. Whereas now they've really focused on it to produce an end result here, so.
Mayor Elliot?
And one of the questions that I had as we designed this is that we've got the men's locker rooms, the women's locker rooms. And then we've got some gender neutral washrooms, but we'll still need lockers for people that choose not to use one of those primary locker rooms. So is that incorporated into the gender neutral washrooms or how do we do that?
Through the chair, it is. Our focus is to make sure all genders are taken care of and managed through here. I don't know what the specifics are, where we've gone through. I need to get Bob involved in this, the director of operations here, because they've dove in. I need to get Bob involved in this, the director of operations here, because they've dove in with staff as the requirements from the gender. But they're satisfied with the requirements from the gender side.
And then I noticed there's two kitchen facilities in the building on different floors. Is that necessary?
Through the chair, again, Bob would probably need to be brought back into this one, but I believe there is a bit of a separation between the staff that work outside compared to the staff that work inside from the, from the office and then the outside and the maintenance bays. The design here is focused on functionality with staff. And when you're working outside and you're coming inside and bringing the weather inside and that everything's kind of been focused around that to make sure everything is productive as far as staff movement is concerned. So I'd believe that two kitchens are created because of that.
But couldn't the staff inside share a kitchen with the staff from the outside?
Through the chair, they could. But again, we're looking at functionality when there's different levels on this building. Whereas the staff that are working in the maintenance base will come in and mainly use the lower levels. Whereas the office staff are mainly focused on staying in the upper levels. Could we have one kitchen? Yeah, we probably could have one kitchen, but the amount of square foot would save from having one or two kitchens is not significant in the scheme of things.
And then there's, we don't have large training facilities in our current setup, but we have two large rooms here in this building. And I wonder if you could highlight for council how those will be used, how often, who's using them and why they're in this building and not elsewhere.
Through the chair, I'd like to revert that one to Bob, the director of operations here. He's had intricate detail working with the architects on staff movement.
I don't see Mr. Smith on the line. That's Mr. Baxton, you can.
No, I can't give you a better answer, but it's obvious that when we come back with, with this for a council decision on scope, we're going to have to clearly rationalize why there's a second kitchen, why there's significant meeting spaces. Sorry, we don't have the answer right here, right now for you, but we hear you loud and clear is that make sure we've got the, we right size this and we're not putting stuff in that we don't need it. We hear you loud and clear on that.
Can I? The other thing that I, that I think is important part of the conversation too, when this comes back is that we're building for a new type of future with more extreme events. And, and I guess, you know, and an electrified fleet or a low carbon fleet. And so, you know, my electric car doesn't need to be repaired or have the same kind of maintenance that my fossil fuel burning car is. And so when we talk about how many bays we need and how much of the fleet will transition to low carbon vehicles, are we planning for today's fleet or are we planning for the fleet of the future? And I guess that's, that's the conversation that I'd like to have about, you know, is this being built for our conditions today and the fleet we have today and the work we do today? Or we put a climate lens across this and we're building a building that is about the future? I hear the comments about its flood resiliency and its post disaster resiliency, which I think is great. But, you know, do we want all of our staff in this building? You know, we also have small facilities planned for Brennan Park and downtown. And so just trying to get a sense when Mr. Smith is here about, yeah, why this many bays, why this size of facility, who has to be here? You know, if we're going to be leasing a new or building a new MUSPA hall, wouldn't the training space go there that everyone could use? It's harder to get people into the public works yard. Like I walked into that yard without my steel toe boots and a vest on and someone was like on me in a second. Where are you going? So, so if we're putting big training rooms here, who can use them? Versus if we put those in city hall, everybody can use them. So those are the kinds of questions I have for this building.
Thank you. I have councillor Hereford and we have about 10 minutes left in this discussion. So questions and comments are welcome.
Thank you. I'm thinking back to when we started the Valley Cliff Fire Hall process and that process included a point where we were really understood the requirements that were coming for the fire department as far as the clean side and the dirty side and, you know, the challenges with decontamination and so on. And I can see similar needs here, but I have to pull them out myself. I have to extrapolate them. Like you mentioned, the inside people, the folks that are working outside for part of the day, the folks that are exclusively admin and the differences. And we really need to be taken through this with that, with that perspective, I think, to go, I think even to get to this part, but we're here already. So that's very important to provide that, that context. And I'm just not, I'm not seeing that. And further the, the site layout, I gather the one side is mainly where we were parking, you know, and maybe the public could enter that way or maybe district staff is coming to use some of the training rooms. But I'm curious about that sort of overall layout beyond traffic flow or landscaping. Like where are the, are there in this budget, are we setting ourselves up to need to do sort of the second wave, which is all the charging stations that are going to be required to support the, the further expansion of our electric fleet and, and so on. So I'm seeing some missing, some missing pieces and I can sort of build my own rationale for some of it. And I can also build an argument against it for some of it without sort of in that vacuum. So when it comes back, I'd like to see some more points of reference. And, and to the chart that we put up that was square foot per population, I think, I'd like to see something around the number of staff or the fleet it's supporting or like that's, you know, we see similar rationale for, what was it, cops per pop, you know, population. And I don't know that that, this does show that we're on the low side for the, but can we pull those numbers out just a little bit further without making its own, without making it a expansive research project to further justify the, the size? So those are the things I'll be looking for next time. And I hoped that we'd get a little bit deeper today as well. But that would be very helpful to just add that context piece that is, that is missing and, and to understand. And I think it goes back to understanding the challenges that we know that public works needs to be, that this is a need of our, of our community. But maybe it was in development, the real estate facilities master plan, maybe it started with the last council that got a tour and understood the challenges of the day and, and, you know, had that context bit, but I feel that I'm missing that. And I, and I would imagine that, I would expect the rest of the council to be in there too. But I'd love to hear, to hear from them. So whether that's a step, a step back just in the deeper presentation, presentation on those, on those pieces to bring us to sort of right the ship there a little bit, I would find useful. And I do understand the rationale though. I'll get back to the, the service bays and keeping them separate from the building. At first I was, I was, when I, when I saw that design, sort of, we were going in that, in that direction. I, I had wondered, because I envisioned and I've seen others where there's the bays are underneath the administration sort of spread out over the top and it keeps the, the height down. But, but I appreciate the, the rationale there and I think it actually works well for the massing for the site as well. So I'm happy to see that, but I do think we have some catching up to do on some of those other pieces of information. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hereford. I have councillor French and then councillor Race.
I haven't seen anything in any of the reporting that talks about the fate of the existing trailers that are the existing public works office. So have they reached end of life? Are they no longer useful to us? Or will they have any kind of afterlife once they've, this facility is built?
Through the chair, we looked at that from a sustainability point. Any building reuse we can do, we focus on doing. Unfortunately, existing office trailers are beyond an end of life. There's nothing we can salvage from them. They're literally, we're trying to work out how we can take them to the dump without adding to the landfill. The good thing about the maintenance bays is whilst they're below code and there's a bit of a safety issue, we can repurpose them. We can literally, because it's a steel frame building, we can pick it up and move it. And we're looking at using that onsite as additional storage.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Race.
Thank you. I was just interested in this chart you've got up on the screen right now. And, and it's based on a 20,000 population for Squamish. And we just had a census result, which indicates we're at 24,000, which would even lower that ratio more. And then I think if everything keeps on going in five years from now, we'll probably be somewhere even beyond that. And so the ratio would change again. So I'm wondering, going back to your comment, I mean, do we know that this is the right size building for now? Or is it expandable? I'm not keen on spending a lot more money now. I don't think anybody is, but, but back to your point, in five or 10 years from now, is this a building that's capable of being expanded? And then the difference in ratios is quite dramatic in some cases. And I'm wondering, and I'm guessing that they have more work bays as opposed to office space than in the ratio than we do. And is that where growth might happen? Are we thinking that if we had to expand it, it's probably more likely to be expanding bays versus expanding office space? Can you speak about that? Or is that something, I'm happy to let you think about that and come back with the next report and kind of just go into that a little bit, but, or if you have a comment now.
Through the chair, I'll dive in a little bit further in the next report. But we do have allowance for expansion. As noted, we have an existing open bay there. That can be taken off now to save costs, which what we're looking at doing. But also we have the space there to expand out on the bays. As far as expansion from the, the office side, we run into some hurdles on flood control. We need to bring everything up. It's, it's not a no, but the, the cost of increasing the office side is kind of significant to do that. But we can always move the office into the higher levels of the, of the maintenance side as well. So I'll come back and dive in in further detail.
Thank you. And can staff just clarify what the timeline is for that next presentation around public works? We've obviously hit a little bit of a hiccup in terms of our financing for the budget or for the building. But what's the next proposed timeline for reviewing this with council?
Through the chair, I was dictated by when the project team will come back with the next level for budgeting. So we're looking at about eight weeks' time and about two weeks, sorry, two months, give or take.
Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
I just wonder if staff have a process for how we decide on how to use the airspace at Tanalis?
I think that the next, the next go around, which was the scope and, and the, and the budget, we sort of need to make a decision on whether, whether or not we're going to go with a Ford, with some form of housing component or some form of community space. We can bring you back probably class D level budgets on both of those options. But at that point, we're going to have to make a decision to go A or B. Otherwise we're designing two different buildings. So I think at that point, that that's the scope decision that council needs to make. We'll provide you sort of preliminary level cost on both options. And at that point, we need to make a decision is it, is it a house, move forward with a housing component or move forward with a community space component or move forward with neither because the budget supports neither? That's the scope decision that's probably pending in again, eight to 10 weeks on that, on that project.
I suppose we've had a letter from the arts community. We could approach BC housing, we could also approach our housing society. And so it's that work that can be done before it comes back to see if there's any nibbles to help us make that decision. Or should council develop some principles for its decision-making and make a call in, in eight weeks?
I, I suspect that budget might drive a lot of those decisions. Or will be expensive, the community space, unless it comes with a grant that we're not aware, I don't know that we've seen, that's on ours. If we want to go with affordable housing, we may, we can apply to BC housing or another housing granting authority. But again, that's dependent on a third party. Our process then is slowed substantially by that third party. So that decision may be driven largely by budget.
I suppose we won't have anyone ready in, in eight weeks.
Correct.
But we will need to make a decision about whether we're going to work hard and pursue housing or work hard and pursue something else. So I'm just wondering whether staff will bring forward a recommendation or whether next time we should be discussing the, the priorities of council and make a decision on our own.
I mean, if, if council had a priority now and they knew that, we could proceed on that basis. At this point, we're proceeding, I think, to offer you cost, rough cost options on both with some, perhaps some funding options. But if council has a preference at this point in time, we can stop doing two pieces of work and do one piece of work instead.
I'll go to councillor Race and councillor Peddingill.
Yeah, just on this point, I mean, I'd always understood that we budgeted certainly for the armoring of the ground floor, but we haven't budgeted beyond that. And so when you're talking about making a decision about what might go there, I mean, I'm assuming that that's so that we bring the proper services and things like that to where they can get to with this phase of construction. But is there any problem with if we decided it was going to be part community and part housing, for example, on the three or four floors above, of separating it from this construction project by even a couple of years as funding might allow? Or do we have to kind of build the whole thing all at once?
Yeah, through the chair, it is hard because we're not hard. It's, it's a slight hurdle with the project team because we're saying, look, we want to allow for the, to build above here. But we don't know if it's going to be, you know, 14 units, 12 units, eight units, or if it's going to be a single level commercial. And what that does is influx, the team doesn't know, you know, for utilities and sizing and all that sort of stuff. So it's a little bit difficult. Right now, we're actually focused on working on a hybrid option as well. Whereas if we do want to come back in the future, that we've at least got some footings and options there that we can do some post additional work to do whatever we want up there. As long as the footing work is done, we're okay. The question for us is how much of the building structure work do we do now to allow for that? You know, do we front load it slightly now? Or do we let this, do, do the actual additional work when we make that decision down the track? And at this stage, we're reducing the structure to allow just the footings. And if we need to come back down the track to, you know, make some holes and actually put posts down to the footings, then at least it still gives us that option to build in the airspace.
But my understanding, when we, when we made the decision to armor the ground floor, I think armor was the word that was used, that that would just allow us to build above period. So there's, but there's sort of, you're saying there's sort of grades of armoring or phases of armoring? And we've budgeted for one, but not maybe the big one?
Through the chair, we've budgeted for the big one. But if costs are creeping up, which is what they're looking like doing, I'm going to come back to council and say, these are the levels of armory, so to speak. It's a good interpretation and it gives us an opportunity to do a minimum amount or actually fortified a little bit more at the moment. We're working through that right now and I can come back on, in eight weeks on that.
Thank you. I will go to councillor Peddingill. I think you had a question. I don't want to go too far down this because they will be back in eight weeks. So let's not speculate too much on this future conversation.
Yeah, no, thanks. And councillor Race asked the one question I wanted to ask and appreciate the answer there. The other one, I'd just like to reinforce that I'm also looking forward to some, a bit better understanding for the public works yard of why the offices, what they're being used for and the bays and what sort of vehicles and all that sort of understanding that some of my colleagues talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, there's a motion to receive the memo, council moved by councillor Race, seconded by councillor Hereford. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the update, Mr. Bragg. Next up, we have the Squamish Public Library provision and this is our CFO, Ms. Heather Boxer, will be up. And we also have Ms. Bloom joining us. Hi Hillary.
Thank you Chair. Ms. Bloom will be joining us with the presentation as well as I believe the Chair of the Squamish Public Library, Molly Luden, will also joining us online. the Chair of the Squamish Public Library, Molly Luden, will also joining us online.
Not sure if you're hearing my sound. Can you hear?
We did just hear you for a second. Try again.
Hello, am I coming through now?
Yeah, you're good to go there, Ms. Bloom. Go ahead. We can see your presentation, but we can also see your notes. So you may want to go into presentation view. Great.
Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, that's just my slides now. And good afternoon, Chair and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Hillary Bloom, Director of Library Services. And joining us as well is our Library Board Chair, Molly Loudon, as well as District CFO, Heather Boxerud. And as you would recall, in conjunction with our 2022 Library Board Library Budget Presentation to Council on October 26th of last year, Ms. Loudon and I introduced the concept of establishing a library provision for the purpose of setting aside any additional surplus, any annual surplus for the library's future use in subsequent years. This aligns with the Library Board Council Relationship as laid out in the Provincial Library Act. And I've included a relevant excerpt of that act on this slide. And as well, the October 26th memo to council was included in today's agenda package. So as stated on the slide, the result of establishing a provision would be that any surplus library funds at year end would be retained in a provision and utilized by the Squamish Public Library based on the authority and conditions set out in the report to council, which was included today. The Squamish Public Library Board reviewed the terms and conditions at their February 16th, 2022 board meeting and approved those terms and conditions at that meeting. And the terms and conditions do include three steps that are involved in the use of the provision, which are the identification of appropriate use of funds, the authority to use the funds, as well as reporting and monitoring. So the staff recommendation before you is that council approve the following resolution. The district that district of Squamish establish a library provision based on the conditions established and endorsed by the Squamish Public Library Board. And the alternative to the staff recommendation would be that the Squamish Public Library annual surplus continue to contribute to the district's unappropriated accumulated surplus or general reserve. That is my very short and sweet presentation. So at this time, I will open it up to questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom, for the presentation. Questions? I'll go to Councilor Herford first.
Thank you for the presentation. And I I'm curious on the from a budgeting point of view and from the sort of the ask, it's a unique relationship between these two entities. So I'm going to ask some questions in this space just so I fully understand it. The I'm curious about the checks and balances around sort of maybe a budget over ask in future or a council seeing the size of this reserve and maybe underfunding, you know, just kind of both sides of that spectrum. So I'm curious about the balance. And I think this is more of a question for, I'm assuming, for our CFO as far as how we flush that out to make sure the asks are, you know, are in line and aren't aren't sort of overinflated or or grossly understated because someone has an eye on the size of the reserve that that exists. So any what exists in our in our systems for this or what would be used here to sort of help with with this particular piece?
So I think I can take that, Ms. Bloom. So the very mechanism in which the budget process works, so in terms of the staff, the library would establish the the recommended amount, then obviously approved by their board and then brought to council to discuss, would be the very basis at which there'd be a reasonability test there. Certainly, if it if it was something where there was an astronomical ask or vice versa, the, you know, council would want something a little bit less or quite a bit less, I think that would have to be, you know, just sort of discussed in this room and approved in this room. And that is very much the mechanism to which there's reasonability built into the budget authorization process.
Thank you. I, yeah, I recall when there was a, I think it was an underspend with some security, some security funds, and there's a big process to to accomplish sort of the reallocation. So this feels much simpler. I was just curious about that, sort of the checks and balances. And I suppose that's all of us. So thank you.
Any other questions, council? Seeing none. Go ahead, Councilor Race.
There wasn't a question, it was a comment. We did have a considerable discussion of this at the board table. And this simplest way I can describe it or way my head around it was this rule to represent a source of funding, much like my 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 love accumulated surplus has for past budgets. When we have a surplus, we have some place we can go to fund some things. But those those decisions are always budget decisions and happen at council. It's just that there's the money as opposed to taking it from somewhere else. And so this is going to be more or less the same thing. Up until now, I find out that any surpluses the library had just came back to the district and ended up in the district's accumulated surplus. And so there really was no surplus building up that was sort of pointed at the library. And this just creates that fund. And so going forward, it would provide a source of funding for some things. And those decisions would be made pretty much at the budget time, more or less as they are now. So we have those types of controls on it. It's just that it doesn't go back into the district. It would remain sort of pointed at a library function of some kind.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilor Race, and broader context. My only question, and I think it's for you, Ms. Boxerud, do we ever put a like a maximum amount that can be held in a provision? Or is that, again, kind of discussed at a budget level on an annual basis?
Through you, Chair. We haven't provided a maximum on any provisions currently at the district and but you certainly can. It would just be an establishment within the provision. I would I would say we wouldn't want to establish a maximum this early on, certainly if it got to a spot where, you know, there was, you know, a larger amount, I think you would want to look back at and perhaps your budgeting too much before, you know, you put a maximum on on the provision.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Peddingill.
Yeah, just following Councilor Race's comments, I had in my mind that this, the the application of this would be for identified capital expenses, that sort of thing. But it sounds like as long as it's identified in the budget, this could be put towards operations or anything and everything. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's the idea.
Councilor Herford.
I was just going to move. I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Councilor Race. Any further comments? Go ahead.
Thank you. I I think this is a reasonable course of action. I think, well, I know that the the fine folks at the at the library work extremely hard to provide services to our community and also are are looking for savings. And I think they should benefit from from that directly and have more control over those funds that we have allocated as as to be spent on library things. So be that services or or capital expenses. So I'm happy to see this this come forward and thank you for all your hard work, everyone involved in getting to this point. I look forward to seeing where we go. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, I'll call the question. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for joining us, Ms. Bloom and Ms. Sedong.
Thanks.
And Ms. Boxerud. All right, council, our next item is the Youth Council update, and we will be waiting for some folks to come and present to us at 3:45. So we will recess this meeting for a half hour. See you back here then. Great. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome back to Committee of the Whole for the District of Squamish on March 1st. I am excited about this next item on our agenda. We're getting an update from the Youth Council. So I'm going to pass it over to Mayor Elliott first to provide some context. And then I believe we'll have a presentation from the council. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Stoner, and welcome, Youth Council, and to those that are joining online as well. So this is the culmination of a lot of work, hard work by these young folks in our community. They've been working since the fall to come up with projects. We've provided them with a $25,000 grant in which they can support youth in the community that is in alignment with our youth strategy. And so we have three groups. They'll each be presenting for five minutes. And then, once all the groups have presented, then, Chair, it would be great to open up the Florida questions. We actually have a meeting tomorrow night, so your insights, council, your questions, your comments, your encouragement will all be helpful because they'll be finalizing their plans this week before we sort of go live and out into the world. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that Christine MacLeod's also here with us today, and she has been a huge help to me. She's been helping to co-facilitate this group and keep things moving along. And so I'm excited for you to meet all of the council groups. Please introduce everyone on your team, whether they're here in person or online, so that council can get to know you. So I will turn it over to the first group. And I believe you guys can introduce your topic and yourselves.
Hi. So this is Peer Supporters, created and presented by Tallulah Russell, myself, Grunor Tatla, who couldn't make it today, Lisa West is over here, Sammy Morrow, and Safira Drismala.
Creating an army of students ages 14 to 24 in Squamish who not only become better friends in their network, but reach beyond to impact others. Participants complete three modules of two hours and at graduation, get a certificate and an honorarium of $150.
Strengthening the social fabric of youth by giving them the tools and knowledge necessary to be good listeners and friends by having 15 to 20 youth participants complete three modules of two hours and at graduation, gain a certificate and honorarium of $120. Apologies for the previous slide. That was an error. These classes would take place in May and on April at the very end. We would have a group of graduates going out into the world to make it a better place and also a great deal of feedback on how to improve our our program in the future.
We have reached out to several local counselors, Cedar Sky Community Services, and members of S D 48 to inquire about facilitation, curriculum creation, and space needed to host our sessions. So far, people seem very receptive.
Deliverables. Strengthen social fabric in the schools and youth communities of Squamish. A sense of empowerment and confidence to handle difficult situations in the alumni of the program and the more connected Squamish. Have our first session by May 2022 and have 20 youth graduate with a wonderful certificate.
For our budgeting, we are thinking of giving an honorarium of $120 per attendee. We are aiming for 15 to 20 attendees, which would be $2,400 for honorarium to $1,800 every low ballot, room rental for training, two hours for three days. We're not sure if we'd have to rent space or if it would be given to us freely, so we haven't put that into our budget quite yet. We have facilitators and we'll be offering them an honorarium of $150 an hour. Our branding and design would would pay people to help us come up with a cooler name than Peer Supporters. Our posters, I can't assume that's that expensive, guys. Snacks during training to keep people munching and crunching and printing certificates. All that together would be about $5,250 to $5,850. And the entire council has a budget of $25,000. So if you split that into the three into three groups for the three different groups that we have, it's about $8,300 per group, and our budget is estimated to be much below that. We have a timeline where we would like to get a branding and names sort of sorted out for March 11th with Tori and people she'd like to work with, if she's cool. We'd like to get our budget approved by this Friday by the rest of the Youth Council and all of you lovely folks. We'd have content created and the facilitators hired by the end of the month, posters designed and created and put on social media for advertising by the end of the month, a session locations booked sort of in the middle of the month, communication to schools that we're going to do this and make sure everyone's on the same page by the beginning of April, and our sessions delivered in April and in through May. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for the presentation and being first. I know it's not always easy to get up and speak, so thank you. We'll go to the second group.
Sure. All right. So our presentation is Spaces and Places. So in our group, it's me, Mercedes, Sarah, and then unfortunately, Sanoma, Jode, and Kaylee couldn't make it, but they have been a key part in our project. So they're amazing. They're a part of it, too. So for the first thing, our mission for Spaces and Places, we would like to create a sort of community in Squamish for the youth. So when we asked the youth where they usually hung out and where they like to spend their time, the answers were not great. They said Walmart and they said, I don't know, just the road, the river. It wasn't good. So we would like to dedicate a night for youth to be able to go somewhere special that they feel comfortable. So, yeah, so it's important for that to create a sense of community with the youth. We would like to give them many opportunities that they feel comfortable in that is known by adults, so everyone knows it's safe and they can go and just have fun and spend a nice time there. That's pretty much the same. Summarizing, we've narrowed it to a little definition of working together with local businesses to provide safe gatherings and community environments in Squamish. You can continue. So who's involved? So in this project, we would like to involve the youth of Squamish as well as local businesses that are found here in downtown. And obviously, we are involved as well because we have created this, and we would just like to spread the word on our project. So who needs to be informed? So for our project, we have informed the Youth Council as well as the businesses and the Squamish youth, we would like to inform them by social media. And then during this youth nights in these local businesses, we would like to have the RCMP outside, making sure everything's going smoothly, and the Squamish, the Cedar Sky Community Services inside as well. So to spread the word, we will be using maybe Mountain FM or posters around Squamish or online, like an Instagram, just so the youth can know, as well as Squamish Moms for the parents, because they should also be involved, even though it's annoying sometimes, but it's okay. So deliverables. So pretty much our idea is that each night in these youth nights, we would like to get five gift cards. And when people come into these youth nights, they put their name and their email on a little ballot, and then at the end of the night, we pull out five names and they win a $10 gift card for the business. So this not only promotes the business, but also makes kids keep wanting to come and enjoying their time and also the business profits because kids will come. And if they're staying there for the youth nights in order to win something, they will eventually buy a coffee or a scone or something like that. So some constraints, as I said before, the RCMP will be supervising as well as the Cedar Sky Community Services. We're hoping to get some volunteers there. as well as the Cedar Sky Community Services. We're hoping to get some volunteers there. Karen is going to connect us to the RCMP soon. So they should be a part of it as soon as possible. So communication. So some local businesses in downtown have been interested, so we've already made a connection there. So they're keen to move forward with the project. So some resources required. Obviously, we will need, from the budget of $8,000 that Tallulah said that we have split, we will not need that much. We have left a lot of wiggle room just in case we need to rent out the area, but we only need it for the for the gift cards as well as posters, which will only be, if you go to the next slide, we have some key dates. So basically, we're thinking the first one to be April 8th, two hours after school on Fridays. We're thinking of doing it every second week, so every fortnight. So then we do it two times a month. So there are some following dates there. So for that, it's only around a budget of $300 for the gift cards, and then we estimated a $200 for posters, but that's overestimating, just depending how many posters we're going to put up. That's it. Thank you so much.
Amazing. Thank you so much, Mercedes and Sarah for coming up. My understanding that Mercedes just came off of a math test, an biology test before coming here, so it's been a busy day for her. I believe we have one more group, so I'll invite them to come up.
Hello, I am Grant.
This is Harrison.
And this is Julie, and we are the Speak Up and Leadership Group. Yep.
So for our initiative, we'll be having two main parts. We have a sort of discussion night that we'll be going to the Cedar Sky Community Services or Youth Services or whatever you want to call them. They have a hosted youth night, I believe, every Friday. And we will be going there and kind of encouraging discussion and having kind of a discussion night with them. And then we will also be producing a youth column in conjunction with the chief, which is, the chief will be publishing youth opinion articles to kind of elevate the youth's voice and kind of get it out to the broad population of Squamish.
As for our project goals for June 2022, we're hoping to get, strike an agreement with community partners that are, would be willing to host weekly or monthly chats. Additionally, the chief, we're hoping they could start getting those columns posted by this point, as well as our first chat with youth would have begun and would be facilitated by one of our hired members for this team.
Yeah.
Okay, so for this initiative, we would require roughly $2,500 bucks out of the $8,000 budget. Roughly $1,000 to pay some sort of facilitator to encourage the discussion at the youth night. We budgeted $1,000 for a potential grant if we saw the need to produce something, like if there was a clear message from the youth of Squamish, we could use that money to fund a project that would help with that problem. And then roughly $500 for advertising and marketing and all that sort of stuff. And then we would also need the places where the youth hang out so we can encourage this discussion. And then platforms such as Instagram to market it, as well as the chief, because you need a newspaper in order to produce a column.
So as for our key dates, what we had in mind was March 18th, we would have an engagement session with SSYC. This would be to try out what this could actually look like and prototype a sample before we jump into a structure that we'd try to recreate every month for these conversations. As of April 1st, we would try to have our first youth column in the chief. And then April 15th, the facilitator would be hired to host these conversations for the remaining months of the summer, hoping to extend for the year. June 3rd, we would have our first chat with youth with that facilitator. And so that is about the timeline for how things would, the ball would get rolling with this group.
So our plan, I guess, our deliverables that we would like to achieve. We would like to have at least three youth columns published in the chief. One chat with youth that is hosted again in June, early June. And then hopefully, we can achieve a really high engagement with youth and get this kind of thing rolling. And yeah, that's pretty much what we're aiming to achieve.
Thank you so much, Grant, Harrison, and Julie. Amazing projects. Counsel, questions? Go ahead, Counselor Pedengal.
Yeah, for the first group, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the group names. I'm terrible with names, but really interesting project. I'm just wondering if you could share some examples, if you have some ideas of what some of the modules might be.
We have decided on what we want to teach in each of these classes. Our first class would be about, you know, how to make sure that you're not overexerting yourself, that you're not trying to handle it all for all your friends. You're not trying to be their therapist rather than their friend and how to, you know, make sure that you can't pour from an empty cup. How do you put yourself first? Our second class would be sort of about, well, now that you, how do you talk to your friends to figure out if they have issues? And how do you invite that conversation in? How do you react responsibly and respectfully to difficult things that your friends might share with you? And then our third session would be like, well, your friend has shared something with you that is, you know, way beyond what you as a teenager can handle. What kind, who in the community can you go to? Who are the adults that can help you with certain things? What are the resources in Squamish that can, you know, help you fix this problem or help address troubles within your friend, et cetera, et cetera? And then we'd also have a little bit of feedback on our last day, so we can sort of figure out, did it go good or not?
Thank you, Tallulah. That sounds like a fantastic program for everyone.
Counsel, any other questions? Mayor Elliott?
All right, this is a question for the Speak Up and Leadership. So over the last few weeks, I've been talking all your projects up wherever I go. But one of the questions that comes back to me from adults in our community and staff at the district is, how do we get one of, like, how do I get my topic in there and get these conversations going? So if people want to reach in and work with your team, are you open to that? Or, you know, I know you want these to be youth-driven conversations, but there's a lot of adults that would like a youth opinion on the conversations that they're hosting. So yeah, I just would like your thoughts on where the balance is.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. The idea is that we would be able, I mean, the whole vision, maybe this wasn't so clear in the presentation itself, is we're hoping that these conversations are action-oriented. So keeping in mind when we're having these conversations, the goal is we build to a column in the chief. And perhaps it's soliciting a group event or like a trash cleanup, whatever, something to that effect. So we want to make sure we're holding on to the fact that we're trying to get things done, not just talk about issues perhaps. But more to your question per se, we would love if community partners would be interested in, first of all, hosting space, like holding space for youth, as well as then being interested in perhaps driving some of that conversation. Especially if they have a stake in the game as a business. I think that's really where youth involvement and Speak Up and Leadership is all about. Youth in positions where their opinion can have influence. So that's maybe my answer to that.
I have a question for the Spaces and Places folks, and then I'll come to you, Counselor French. I'm curious if you have a sense of the types of businesses you'd like to partner with? And if the district facilities are of interest at all, or if they're not, that's totally fine, but why not?
We currently have contacted mostly like cafes or a few cafes and places that have like lots of tables and chairs, places for youth to sit, get food, because if you're there for two hours and you happen to get hungry, you might want to leave, but if there's food, you'll want to stay a little bit longer. And then our first idea was around downtown, but then we realized that youth, most of them can't drive yet. So we're also planning on like hosting them more in like near the Highlands and more near Valley Cliff, just to get like to reach a broader like group of youth. Yeah.
Counselor French, where are you?
Thank you. My line of inquiry is for the Speak Up and Leadership Group. As a former writer with the Squamish Chief and Peak News Magazine, I'm very interested in the youth column idea. Is there one particular individual who's really interested in being the columnist? Or are you thinking some kind of rotating situation, a bunch of number of people? Or mass submissions to the chief and then the editor chooses? Can you share a little bit more where you're at with that?
Yeah, thanks for the question. The dream is that through a combination of the Instagram and then these conversations with youth and then leading up to the column in the chief, we would be plugging the fact that one of you can write about this all throughout that process of, if we called a month. If we imagine the beginning being like, we initiate what type, or we talk about what type of conversation we'll be trying to have, what topics maybe? And then there's two weeks of engagement, whether it's, you know, one hosted by a business and then one hosted at one of our sites, leading to then the column in the chief. Yeah, as a journalist, I'm sure you can see why it would be difficult perhaps to coordinate youth ideas into a column. But I think that's one of the pieces in our budget that we've allocated for is someone to take one full-time day of work per week, and their job would be to coordinate the social media as well as help coordinate that effort to have a column by youth. So I'm imagining a fair bit of that responsibility will also be like, I wouldn't say tutoring, but supporting a writing process amidst school, amidst other responsibilities. How can we put pressure on with also being mindful of life, of youth? Does that, did I answer the question?
Sure, yeah, definitely offers insight. It's an exciting opportunity. I know of a number of young people in the past who got their start as journalists through just such an opportunity. They wrote some youth columns in the chief and are now journalists and doing that work. And then I just also, as a follow-up, was wondering if any thought has been given to multiple platform posting for those columns? You know, I think about all of the digital opportunities that are out there for such a column to appear in a bunch of different places, hitting a bunch of different audiences.
Yeah, well said. Certainly, I think it makes a difference if it's shareable. We will have the Instagram for Squamish Youth Council that will, obviously, we will be amplifying those stories through or the column. But yeah, if it can get shared to Facebook, if it can get shared to, like, that's the, I think that's where youth get a lot of information these days, because youth aren't necessarily plugged into a workplace. We're plugged into schools, but that's kind of the end of our official day as youth. Then we go off, have soccer practice or perhaps work, whatever it may be. But it's hard to get streamlined communication, and that's why, I think that's why I think the purpose of these conversations is, is where can all youth come together and engage on one thing? That's perhaps a local story.
Thanks, Chair.
Counselor Herbert?
Thank you. Maybe I'll ask the Peer Support Group, but I was curious about a couple of things. I think this, I love this concept. I think it's great. Where do you see these conversations happening? I know there was some, I think one of your budget items was to get some space, and I'm just curious about having it. You know, are you thinking it'd be in the school or elsewhere and kind of, and I suppose the rationale behind that. I'm curious what kind of space is conducive to these conversations. They're very important.
We are currently reaching out to How Sound to see if we could do stuff there, but there is Mamma Mia is kind of happening at the same time that this would happen, so we can't do it in the theater. We could do it in the library, but that is what, that is what they would say. We have also considered discussing using space with the Cedar Sky Community Services building. We could go rent space at a different place, but that's not something that we have currently talked about within our group or looked into doing. Thank you for the question.
Mayor Elliott?
So one of the things that might not be obvious to Counselors is that behind this group of youth are a lot of community partners, and some of them are represented here today. But SD48 and the principals at Don Ross and How Sound have been very supportive. Our Squamish Placemaking Society, they've been at a meeting supporting discussions. Our own staff have been at meetings. Cedar Sky Youth Services have been very active with youth, and so when, when these teams present on potential partners, it's not just imaginary, and these partners are already at the table with them, have attended meetings with them, and so these, these young people have already reached out into the community and they're building relationships with these important community partners that were part of our youth strategy. So so I think that's a really important part. So Youth Council, I don't know if any one of you wants to tackle this, and if you all panic, you can all look over at Christine and she can answer this question, but in our first meeting, we had you all read from each other's applications, and there was one theme that came through loud and clear. And then, when we had one of our first brainstorming meetings about where you wanted to take your energy and the work you want to do, there was another theme that arose out of that. And so does anybody want to speak to those two things? Tallulah?
So a unanimous thing that was mentioned in all of the responses to the application was that people were worried there wasn't enough mental health support for youth. And that is especially true considering COVID and worldly situations that aren't fantastic, that people worry about a lot. And we sat down and we thought about this and we considered it, and when we came back to brainstorm, we talked a lot about how one of the things that makes anything difficult is the lack of accessibility for a variety of things, whether it's accessibility that you can't get due to disabilities or simply the fact that it's just not there in the community. And we found that it is, there are other players in the community that are looking to tackle mental health. They're just not here yet due to a variety of reasons, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say who that is. Foundry BC is going to open a thing in Squamish, and they're doing that in June, and that's fantastic. And we felt that, well, at least I felt that, a lot of, they can do the mental health stuff better than the Squamish Youth Council can, because they've been around, they know what they're doing, they have all the tips and tricks. And we're just a bunch of guys that are starting out, and we don't quite have all the skills yet. But we do know that something that we can do and something that we, that we should do because no one else is filling this niche is how do we make Squamish more accessible for youth? How do you make it more, how to make it easier to do stuff you want to do? How do you find a space and a place to hang out? Because there aren't a lot of those that are easily accessed. How do you make mental health stuff easy to find for you that isn't, you know, having to march into, marches a lot, having to walk into the big fancy scary building? How do you make it accessible for you to be able to do that with your friends really easily? How do you make it accessible to have people talk? How do you make it accessible to have youth talk to the community and have the community talk back and have a reliable dialogue? How do you make that as easy as possible? Because everyone needs these things to happen, and the only way to make it happen is to make it as easy as possible. Like you said, the same thing twice. So that's sort of where we shifted our focus to, and that has resulted in these three wonderful groups. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much. I think that context is really important. Pretty much every single application we got for Youth Council said that mental health for youth was the biggest challenge in our community. And so it's been so interesting to watch this group of young people evolve their ideas from really trying to address that fundamental gap in our community.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. Counsel, any further questions for our three groups? Counselor Herbert?
Outside of the amazing work you've done to get this far, one of the things that jumped out at me was posters. And in our digital era, I was really curious, it really stood out to me, because I was expecting to see, you know, sponsored Facebook because I was expecting to see, you know, sponsored Facebook promotion or similarly on Instagram. And could someone fill me in as the, where the importance of that? Because that feels very old school in this very modern time, which was reassuring to me, but I was also curious as we're seeing these shifts.
Well, I love the idea of a sponsored thing, but I know that anytime I see the little sponsored thing under the Instagram, I get rid of it immediately because I hate ads and I hate capitalism. Now, that's a very teenage thing to say, I'm sure, but it's not, it's not going to work for me. It's a big no bueno. So I know that media outreach is going to be a really big part of this, but we're also coming from a bunch of high schoolers who, when you're in clubs, what you do is you put posters on the walls. That's the easiest and most succinct way to do it, because getting people to follow your school club Instagram is like Sisyphus with the rock. Like, you're never going to get there. It is, it's a lot of work. So hopefully, I mean, eventually we're going to get like a sizable social media presence. And when that happens, it'll be fantastic. We can do a lot more outreach that way. And it is certainly an element of what we want to do to make sure that stuff is online, that people can find it easily and readily and it just, it's like in their feeds secretly. But I wasn't thinking about that as the first thing to do to get people to look at it, because in order to do that, you have to have a following. And I don't think that any of us can undertake, like, being a social media manager is a whole job. And I don't think any of us can undertake that burden alongside school and be able to manage it all wonderfully. If we wanted to use some of our $25,000 to hire someone to do that professionally, that'd be sick. We'd have to discuss this as a group, and that's a reasonable idea. But we would have to, it's a good idea to try to get people to look at our cool little screens. But also, I love posters, man. And you can put posters anywhere. You can put them on that one giant wooden, what is it called when you have the electricity poles, the electricity poles, shirt or not? You can put them on that. You can put them on store windows. You can do whatever you want with them. Can you do it with a social media post? I don't think so.
Thank you for the wonderful solution. I love the analog solution. Oh, yeah.
Add, oh, let's turn on. If I may also add, we realized that like Instagram posts, it might just be just you seeing it. Whereas if there's like a poster hanging in the school, you might see it, your friend might see it, your teacher might see it, who's bring it up. Or you would bring it up with your friend and your teacher would overhear you speaking and they would be like, oh, this is interesting. Or, oh, I heard about that. And like, say if it was hanging in, I don't know, a cafe in a Starbucks, you'd be getting a coffee along with, I don't know, be you and your mom's day out and you both see it and you're like, oh, mom, I heard about this. And she'd be like, oh, it's a poster hanging in a big cafe, like, not some weird Instagram post that I've never heard about. Like, then parents can also know that it's safe and it's reliable and you can send your kids there and not worry about them doing weird things with weird friends.
Amazing. Good to know that posters still work. Council, a reminder that there's a youth council meeting tomorrow night where they are actually looking for some direction on these projects. So if you do have any comments about them, I think that that would be helpful. I'll go to Mayor Elliott and then Councillor Race.
Just another question for the Spaces and Places group. So you talked about having a safe place for youth to hang out and there's food there and there's friendship. Are you planning to activate that in any way with like games or music or art? Or is it really, this is, the spaces and places are really about just creating the space and the opportunity?
Yeah, so we actually should have put it in the budget, but we've already gotten, Sarah got some games from Pearls. So they can play games, but mainly we just wanted to create a sense of community. So we just wanted youth to be able to come with their friends or alone if they want to and just a safe place to either study or drink a coffee or anything that is not Walmart. Because no. But yeah, so we just wanted to create a sense of like inclusivity. And we hope that, yeah, they, they come with their friends. And there's always in the cafes we've contacted, there's a lot of seating area, a lot of area outside. So it should be nice for them to just gather around.
And nothing's set in stone yet, so we can always like, we realize like, oh, youth like music. We can always have a music night. It's evolving. So.
Councillor Race.
Thank you. So this wasn't a question. It was more of a comment because listening to you and you're talking about a number of different things and goals. And one of the things that occurred to me, which is, it's not necessarily a solution for everything, but it's something that I wish I had gotten into more at your age, is volunteerism and volunteering to help your community or some parts of it. Because I find I've been along to service clubs and different clubs over the years. And, and one of the things, if you have a project, whatever it might be, and it could be putting on an event, it could be cleaning up a park, it could be, you name it, or create one. If you do that, what I find is I get to know people when you're out there working away with them, raking together or something like that, better than you do in other situations, like sitting beside them at a meeting or something like that. And also I tend to feel a lot better. I mean, for me, it's a good mental health stimulant. I get a good feeling out of helping my community. And as I say, I just wish that I'd, I've been doing it now in sort of the last half of my life. And I can only say you're way ahead of me on this and I just wish I'd started closer to your age, because there can be a lot of fulfillment in it. So you can kind of pick your project or projects and go with different things. The other thing it does is it gives you intergenerational access, because you'll find with a lot of these projects that there are people of a variety of different ages. And so when you're talking about access to things, part of it is, to me, would be access to different age groups, talking to them, getting to know them, know what they like or don't like and so forth. And so these types of things, I think, can give you that kind of access to different layers of people in our community. And so I'd encourage you to, I mean, pick your project. It's not for me to describe it for you, but, or projects, or how you want to somehow put something back into your community. But thanks for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Councillor Race. Council, any further comments? Councillor Herbert.
Thank you. I, I can see the focus on, on mental health. Some of it, sort of that active focus of the, of the peer support group and the sort of more passive focus of creating the, the places and spaces and, and as well as the conversations to make sure that you're being heard. I mean, that's a big part of, of mental health as well. Are people concerned about me and am I getting my point of view across? So I, very good job of, of doing that. And I think everything that you're touching on is that. I was curious to see that the, the budgets are always interesting to work with. And I know it might be for some of you, your first exposure to working with, with a budget. And it was interesting to see that all of them were under. So I'm curious to see where there's opportunity, where budget helps. Budget, spending money for the sake of spending money isn't necessarily what we're, is not what we're here to do. But I'm curious to see what that next step is. And I know there's some thoughts about that and I think that was one of the outcomes of the, of the being heard portion is finding some, some action items. And I'd just like to see a little bit, I'd love to see that sort of flushed out a little bit more, just in general, to see where, where there's room. And, you know, where can we, that budget be used to support the outcomes better? Like, where can we spend a little bit more? You know, is it more posters? Is it, is it different spaces for, you know, whether we need to rent them for, whether you need to rent them for, for the places and spaces or to facilitate the conversations in places that are, that need to happen that will get the best outcome, where everyone feels comfortable and relaxed and, and so on. So that part jumped out at me and sometimes when someone comes to present to us, I, we need to ask the questions about, well, you're way over the projected budget. What are we going to do about this? And in this case, I think maybe as a, as a group to be, to be thoughtful about that and see where, which particular program could, could use that, that support would be, would be interesting to see. But good works and I'm looking forward to seeing all these things come to fruition. So thank you very much.
Please, come on up.
Yeah, that just got me thinking how we used to have the youth center, but that got tore down. So now youth can actually have a place to live. And in my mind, that is a huge problem to risk this place where people can actually go and feel safe and get help. So now they can actually have a place to live and not be homeless because the rent is like out. So maybe someday we can create a new youth center, which would be great.
I will just interject and say that it is being built as part of the same building of youth foundry. It's just taking a little bit longer for it to actually be under construction, but it is coming. So just bear with us for a little bit longer. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm just going to make an observation and you can take it as you might. And really it's following on Councillor Race's comments. In listening to the presentation, some words stuck out to me, a more connected Squamish. Councillor Race referred to different ages we have that would be involved in volunteer projects or hosting volunteer projects as part of a more connected Squamish. And something comes to mind. Around April, May, which is when your project activities are happening, Squamish Dreamkeepers has a lot of work that needs to be done in cleaning herring nets that are placed in there and need to be pulled out at the end of herring season and cleaned and stored away. And the average age of Squamish Dreamkeepers is about 72 and their ability to use social media is nil. Therefore, they have a very difficult time getting people out to do this important work. And so I just put it to you, and that's just a simple example. But is there, when you're considering spaces to go to have gatherings and events? I really do think that Councillor Race's suggestion is a good one. Maybe the space to go and to expand the repertoire of places to go and to meet people is a volunteer project in the evening, somewhere outdoors, indoors, with service clubs, environmental groups. So talking to somebody that needs some volunteer help might be an idea to find a new venue and a place for that connected, connecting Squamish to each other theme of yours. So I just put that out. I think volunteer projects is maybe something to consider, how it might fit into each one of your initiatives. Thank you.
Councillor Pat Engel.
Yeah, just, just a comment. I had the privilege of attending one of the earlier meetings and just appreciated all the discussion and sort of wondered how you would coalesce this into a few very specific projects, which you seem to have done a good job of. But it shows to me a lot of thought and adjustment and innovation. And then I heard in some of the presentations today, some space to sort of try some things out. I think it was mentioned in the chief article, see how that process goes and how you might adjust. And I think that's a, for me, a real strength and because it seems like there's a lot of things that some may work and some may not. And I really appreciated the, the thought to think about how you might adjust and adapt. And I think that speaks well to the success in some form or another, maybe not exactly as you expected, but there will be some sort of great success for all of these along the way. And so I think that's really great to see. And so thank you.
I will put some of my own comments in. I want to thank each and every one of you for coming today and for being part of the youth council, those folks who were able to make it today and those who also weren't able to make it. I realize it's, life is busy and so you can't always make all the things. But appreciate you all putting in the time, the effort and the passion to bring these projects to life. The importance of youth mental health, as Tallulah, you mentioned in terms of the applications, and the mayor provides some further context, is forefront and foremost in our community. And it's no small issue to tackle. And I just commend all of you for the amount of effort it must have taken to try and get from that very heavy place of recognizing how important youth mental health is to trying to find some concrete actions that we can take to try and address that really big hairy challenge. Not that this all lays on your shoulders. I'm so happy to hear that there's community partners at the table and I hope you know that you're not alone in those struggles, that we're here to support you. And that's why I'm so excited about these three really diverse projects and the variability that they bring to trying to address that challenge. From elevating youth voices to connecting and networking amongst your peers, to really giving some of the tactile, tactile and important practical solutions to dealing with youth mental health with your peer support. I think the variability in those projects is really amazing and really complementary one to another. Like Councillor Herbert, I noticed that everybody is under budget. And not that you want to spend money just to spend money, but know that it is there so that we can elevate these projects, so that we can elevate the impact and think about how we want to spend those dollars. And finally, I had one other thing. I'll leave it at that. Thanks. Mayor Elliott.
There's no doubt about it that working with the youth council will be probably the highlight of this term in office. And so, so glad that we have had the chance to kick this off. And, you know, I just want people to know that this group of young people, they meet for two hours once a month and they've been able to accomplish this level of work in meeting just two hours a month. And a few desperate Zoom meetings in between, I think, and phone calls, and they've received a ton of support from Christine McLeod. Jeremy Valerit is also helping behind the scenes with logistics. And as I said, community partners have been there for us. If we call them and say, can you come to a meeting? They come to the meeting and it's just been so amazing because we know how busy everyone is. But this group of young people are helping us build youth council. It's like a plane we're building while we fly it. This is our inaugural group. They've been so patient and so energetic, sort of contributing to figuring out what youth council is, how they want it to be, and building these projects in as well. And I know they'll have a lot of thoughts about how we make it better in future years as well. So I want to thank you all for working on your projects, for coming today. For those who couldn't make it, I know they've contributed to their teams and I'll look forward to our discussion tomorrow night as we sort of make these projects more real by putting them into the community. So thanks very much.
Thank you. And with that, council, we did go over time. I know that in the youth council, you guys all have a chance to chair meetings. I did not chair this one exceptionally well because we are over time, but I thought that it was really important to give this the time that it needed for discussion and questions. So thank you again for coming. And I will entertain a motion to terminate. Moved by Councillor Herbert, seconded by Councillor Race. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.